Okay, all right. I'm gonna go ahead now and call the meeting to order. Would you like to recite the Pledge of Allegiance? Brett, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Stacia. Steve Jarvis?
Here.
Bill Minor?
Here.
Jim Peterson?
Here.
John Johnson? Absent, we have a quorum. I will ask this question once again after we have our new aldermen take their oath of office, but right now, are there any conflicts of interest that anyone notes with anything on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll move into the consent calendar. The approval of the 7/13/2020 Agenda, approval of 6/22/2020 Minutes, and approval of claims. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion, Alderman Johnson, is there a second to the motion?
Actually, my name's Jim Peterson.
I'm sorry. Alderman Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Jarvis, we have a motion, Alderman Peterson, a second, Alderman Jarvis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Jim Peterson?
Yeah.
Bill Minor?
Yes.
Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
Motion approved. Public comment, members of the public may speak on any matter that's not on the agenda. We ask that you please limit your remarks to three minutes per speaker, and please use our podium.
Hi, everybody, good evening, and I do thank you for your time. My name is Kay Buglitz, and I live in Hill City. I'm here tonight to describe an experience I had with this organization, the city of Hill City, that I had about two weeks ago. It happened, I happened to be driving by the tennis courts when I noticed the fence being torn down around the tennis courts by the city administrator and the public, city public works director. I stopped to ask what was happening, and at that point, the city administrator said he was unsure why it was being taken down and that it was a mayor's project. I repeatedly asked my question and got the same answer three times. He instructed me to talk to the mayor. Twenty minutes later, I saw the mayor and I decided to go get the answer to my question. At that point, the mayor stated that the fence was coming down because of senior citizens' needs. Apparently, they needed that space to access over the next several weeks. I asked why the whole fence needed to come down, and the mayor stated they needed to utilize every inch for the senior center needs. I suggested leaving parts of the fence up so others could utilize the space, as well as for which I got a firm answer of no. The fence is coming down, and it is not going back up. So number one, the minutes that are in front of you now from the last council meeting clearly reflects the mayor's conversation in her report, Section 8B, stating the fence was coming down, yet the city admin tells me he doesn't have any idea why the fence is coming down. Of course, he was at this very meeting. Why should more people get involved if we could just get a straight answer from one of our officials? Number two, why are the needs of the senior center more important than other citizens in this community when a simple solution would have been to take down the north side only, and that would give the seniors their access that they needed and still maintain an area to be used in a safe manner by others in this community? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I'll go ahead then and close public comments. And before we get into the oath of office, I believe we have something for the council members? Current council members? I want to give this to Steve Jarvis. It's just a plaque from the city, from the staff, for your service and dedication to the city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have one for Jim Peterson. He was on from 2016 to 2020. So thank you for this. Brett, I believe we also have...
Yes. We always have kind of a gag gift, and this one's probably not as funny as what we've had in the past, but probably more fitting, we have new sidewalk to get out. So this is actually from the forms that were poured for the wall that separates the upper and the lower. This is what oozed out of the form as it was curing. So everybody gets a...
Thank you, I'm glad to get a piece of that.
A piece of the new sidewalk.
Piece of history, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'd like to thank you for your service on city council. Now we'll go ahead and move into action items. Action item 7A, oath of office. You can, yes, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
And affirm...
And affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the state of South Dakota...
And the state of South Dakota...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the city mayor of the city of Hill City...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor of the city of Hill City...
Pennington County...
Pennington County...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you.
All right. Okay, now if Dale Householder would please come up. I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I solemnly swear and affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the state of South Dakota...
And the state of South Dakota...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of city alderman for the city of Hill City...
Of city alderman for the city of Hill City...
Pennington County...
Pennington County...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Jason Gillespie. I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I do solemnly swear and affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the state of South Dakota...
And the state of South Dakota...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of city alderman for the city of Hill City...
Of city alderman for the city of Hill City...
Pennington County...
Pennington County...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, and I have one more that we will be handling over the phone. Our incoming Alderman Carl Doty has been called out on emergency fire duty. One of his responsibilities is that Carl works for the Forest Preserve System, and there is a fire raging somewhere outside of our state, and Carl has been called for duty for it. So while he will be returning in a short period of time, we do have him on the phone, so I would like to swear him in on the phone. So Carl, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Carl, could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemn, I do solemnly swear and affirm...
I do solemnly swear and affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the state of South Dakota...
And the state of South Dakota...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of city alderman for the city of Hill City...
Of city alderman, city of Hill City...
Pennington County...
Pennington County...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, thank you, Carl. Carl, when you return, we'll have you sign your oath. Okay. Now, the next order of business that we have is action item 78, which is the election of the president and vice president of the common council. At this time, what the council will do is they will hold their own internal election to determine who will serve in the capacity of president and then vice president. So I will accept any nominations that the council floor may have for president.
I'll nominate Dale.
So I have a nomination from Alderman Gillespie for Dale Householder for council president. Is there a second to the nomination? Okay, I believe that's Carl seconds it. Any further conversation? Hearing none, can we please have a roll call vote, Stacia? Bill Minor?
Yeah.
Jason Gillespie?
Yep.
Carl Doty?
Yeah.
And Dale Householder?
Mr. Stain? You need to vote for yourself.
Motion carried, congratulations, Dale. And now, a motion for vice president of council. Is there a motion?
I nominate Jason Gillespie.
Alderman Householder nominates Jason Gillespie. Is there a second to the nomination?
I'll second.
Second, Carl Doty, any conversation? Let's go ahead and roll call vote, please, Stacia. Jason Gillespie?
I'll pass, just 'cause Dale did.
Bill Minor?
Yeah.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
And Carl Doty?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carried, congratulations, Mr. Gillespie. So at this point in time now, I'd like to move on to the next action item that falls on my shoulders, and I've actually been waiting for months to do this action, and I believe it is appropriate. I'd advise the council that I intend on nominating Stacia Talan as finance officer for the city of Hill City. With no objections, Stacia, please come forward.
There should be, Mayor, there should be a motion and a second.
Oh, a motion and a second, okay. I'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion to approve this nomination?
So moved.
Alderman Gillespie, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Householder, any discussion? Roll call vote for yourself. Carl Doty?
Yeah.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
Bill Minor?
Yeah.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Okay. With that being done, come on up here. It's been long enough. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm... I do solemnly swear and affirm... That I will support the Constitution of the United States... That I will support the Constitution of the United States... And the state of South Dakota... And the state of South Dakota... And that I will faithfully discharge the duties... And I will faithfully discharge the duties... Of city finance officer... Of city finance officer... For the city of Hill City... For the city of Hill City... Pennington County... Pennington County... To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Thank you. Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to action item 7G, and this is one that I had asked be added to the agenda. First, in doing so, and I promise that I won't make this very long, as a matter of fact, I have a little gift here for Stacia. And this is the closest thing I could come to, to a Hollywood stage hook, and I know that you in your position are going to put up with myself and Brett, who tend to do roll on and on. So if at any point you need to pull us off the stage, feel free.
Have you got more of those?
Only Stacia gets one. The first thing that I wanted to do before I get into this pretty-looking hardware that's sitting up in front of me is I've had a lot of time to do some introspective thinking. And in doing so, I realized what the country, what my family, what my neighbors, and what this community means to me. And the oath that I took tonight, while it's the oath that we all took, I feel that I owe the city and our residents and our business owners a little bit more of explanation of what that oath really means. So I'd like to read for you an excerpt of something that I had posted on social media. And it reads as follows. "I was raised to hold my country dear and respect those that are positioned as leaders. Whether or not my personal beliefs were in agreement with theirs, I respect them and their position. I understand that there are people who pay the ultimate price to ensure our freedoms. Although I am very disheartened with behavior from those who lack education and the ability to understand all the facts before reacting, I am confident that we will not erase the past but continue to learn from it. We will not be held down and intimidated by the bullies, regardless of age. We will move forward and continue to enjoy our freedom. I will stand for our flag and kneel to the cross. I will continue to get teary when I hear our national anthem and will respectfully recite my Pledge of Allegiance. I will be the solution, not the problem. I will stand behind my country and my city. I will do what is right and not what is popular. I will never lose respect for my fellow Americans. I will understand the value of others, regardless of our agreements or differences. I will be the example. I am proud to be an American, South Dakotan, and Hill City resident and leader. What a wonderful country we live in. That's my pledge to the community and my country." Thank you. So we're going to be going through some major changes here in Hill City, and I hope everyone can feel the excitement, feel how we're moving forward, and feel the potential that we have as a community. It's very important to me that people learn people and understand and respect what individuals have to offer, regardless of where you came from, where you work, what time you get up in the morning, what color your hair is, what color your skin is. It doesn't matter. We all work together, and we all deserve respect. And recognition and respect is something that I am very big on. As a result, I've decided that I want to start while I'm in office Mayor's Awards of Excellence, which is recognition that I financially fund, but I also use as an opportunity to go out to our community and those people that have really been contributing to our community, the unsung heroes, the people that you never hear about because they do it in such a manner that it's inconspicuous, but it has a large impact. And with that being said, there's a couple of folks that I'd like to recognize tonight. The first one was unable to make it in attendance to our meeting tonight. And the reason that I bring this up is he supported the city for many, many years, and on his exit, we really never had the opportunity to thank Frank Betman for what he did for our city. So I've selected this award for Frank Betman, and the legend reads as follows. "Frank Betman, Hill City Attorney, 2011 to 2019. We are forever grateful for your vision and leadership." That will be presented to Frank at a time that we can catch up with him. Right now, he's traveling and out of town. So that was the first. Then I started to think about some individuals. And really, the first place that I needed to start with individuals is right within my little home here that I've built over the last year in the city. And for a long time, folks weren't feeling like they were appreciated or that they were able to receive support, yet that was a minority, that wasn't the majority of people. There were people that understood that without their abilities to be able to do things, we wouldn't get things done in the city. And I was one who not only learned that quickly, but tried to appreciate it as we went on. As I take a look at the staff, I'd love to have something to acknowledge everyone for what they've done. But I've decided that in order to truly make this special and make it something that stands out, I needed to dig deep, and I needed to understand who I would be able to recognize as that one person that works within our city. So I took a look at everything that's happened throughout the year and accomplishments. And again, I can't even start to think, to list all of the things that this wonderful staff has done for us. But I was able to dig pretty deep, and I was able to dig up one person who not only performed their job in such a way that it made us proud to have her as not only an employee, but also a teammate, but really worked hard to continue the Hill City vision and make sure that we're going in the right direction by doing things that we'd never heard of before and standing their ground. So what I'd ask is I'd ask that Danny Shade, you please come forward. Danny, this is for you. I'd like to thank you for everything that you've done for the city. You've moved mountains despite the boulders that were put in your way. This is the Hill City Mayor's Award for Outstanding Staff Achievement. Thank you. So I talked about unsung heroes a little bit, and there's somebody in our community that is a real dynamo. I don't know how things ever get done without this person, and I can't think of one thing that's on the list that they don't show up for, that they're not coordinating. At the time that we had the COVID going around, and there were all those conversations, this person, although in that high-risk category, really still did what she does and went out and made a difference. And I thought this would be a wonderful time to recognize her, her achievements, and just the great person that she is. So Ms. Sue Anderson, would you please come forward? Sue, I'd like to give you this. This is the 2020 Hill City Mayor's Awards of Excellence for Outstanding Community Support. Thank you, Sue. Then there's other organizations within our community, and I know that there's other people that get recognized, but there's organizations that truly make a difference. And it wouldn't seem fit to have some type of recognition without really taking those organizations and understanding what they do and how they move us forward. This particular organization, when I spoke of moving mountains, really moved mountains. I sat for many years, and I heard, "It can't be done, it's fiscally not possible, it's just not gonna work." And at the same time, I heard the then-at-time president say, "I don't take no for an answer. No just isn't in my vocabulary. I know it can work." And beside her sat one of the hardest-working assistants, directors, employees that had had this vision for many years, but was told that it would never be done. So in appreciation of the mountains, literally, that they have moved, because dirt is moving as a result of this, I'd like to recognize the EDC and their major accomplishment in getting the Bull Run subdivision not only inked, but also off the ground. In order to be fair, I know it's not fun to just have one award and you all have to share, so I've got plaques for each of you. So this plaque recognizes you for your efforts to address attainable housing through the Bull Run subdivision. So if you're here as I call your name, I'd ask you to come up. And first, I'd like to start with Kristi Hawthorne. Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you.
Wonderful attitude. And now, a gentleman that needs to make it, continue to run with those shoes that he has, Mr. Bob Lowery. And Mr. Victor Alexander.
He should get an award, he's on radio.
Not present with us, we have Curtis Tyler, and I'm gonna ask that Bob see that Curtis gets his award. Mr. Dale Householder. Mr. Dan McNamara. Not missing at tonight's meeting, Mr. Ron Roskinak, and also Mr. Brian Rupert. And last but not least, Chris Van Ness. So I have one more object in front of us, and this is really the one that started the whole thinking. And what the rest of you have seen and hopefully received tonight was an offshoot of that. But I was thinking about, again, those people that continue to work, continue to support, that are the unsung heroes, and quite honestly, a lot of time never have the opportunity to be acknowledged or recognized. And I know that we, in our individual ways, try to do that, but it was very important to me that this really become the first award of this kind this year for our city as well as this person. Without this person, we wouldn't be where we are. So this award, the Mayor's Award of Excellence, is for outstanding community support, and it's for Janet Vitovic Beely.
Oh, my goodness. I would like to thank the Academy. Truly, this is shared with everyone who is here. So I thank you so very much.
You're very welcome.
It's just, what a huge honor. You're the one who can do it all possible.
And so Stacia doesn't have to use that hook, I just have one more thing that I'd like to say. And that's, I'm so excited about our future, about where we can go as a city, how strong we can be. And we understand how we get that done, and it's through everybody. So about a year ago, when I first took the oath for this office, I talked about something called Team Hill City. One town, one team, one dream. And that's really what we are. And I think working together, we can accomplish that. And you'll note that some of our staff has the Team Hill City shirts. What I'd like to do is I'd like to invite all of our aldermen. And Carl, yours is in your mailbox. Bill, I hope you've received yours already in the mail. And I'd like to just give you one of our shirts and say, hey, thanks for joining the club.
Thank you.
So with that, I will go ahead and move on to the next action item. Before we actually jump into the action item, I know we have the Pennington County Sheriff's Department on the line. And guys, I'm sorry I made you wait this long, but I'm gonna go ahead and move you up now so you can give us your report and get back to protecting people for us.
That's all right, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. In the June report, I'll keep it short. For the month of June, we had three arrests. All three of those arrests were the result of assault. And on another note, we're currently getting the rally schedule put together. And I don't know if everybody knows, And I'm not know, I don't know if everybody knows, but we won't have the special deputies out this year. However, we will have ample deputies out to be able to take care of whatever might happen. There'll be a lot of Pennington County deputies out, they just won't be from other jurisdictions. And that schedule will probably be done here in the next week or two. Is there any questions for me or any comments regarding the report?
Mayor?
Absolutely. Alderman Minor, is that you?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to publicly thank the Sheriff's Office. I did send an email. They were put in an impossible no-win situation, and I just wanted them to publicly know that Hill City supports them in all their efforts to protect and service.
Thank you.
We appreciate that, and I really appreciate your email. Thank you for that so much.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think we're good. Okay. Thank you. Let's move on now to Action Item 7H. Approval of Sound Permit. 124 Main Street, this and that bar teak. Tina Kettler.
I believe Tina's here tonight. So this is an outdoor sound permit. These, again, are issued, you can kind of read on the sound permit itself. They're issued annually, and they're good from the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM each day. And so this permit's not just valid for one event, but it's valid up until March 31st of next year. And they will be playing music and have occasional speakers outside on the patio, so they've filled out the paperwork and recommend approval.
Okay. Any discussion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve Alderman Householder. Is there a second motion? Or second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gillespie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Stacia? Dale Householder?
Yes.
Bill Minor?
Yep.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doughty?
Yep.
Okay. Motion approved. Action Item 7I. Approval of Special Event Music in the Park. VIC, Janet Vitovic Beely.
So this is for a special event. It's music on the green down at the Visitor Information Center Park area, to be held August 1st, Saturday, from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. And Janet and I actually toured the property last week, I think it was on Friday, and we kind of did a walkthrough of the whole property and talked about everything from parking to sound to vendors to...
Electrical needs.
Electrical needs, all kinds of things. We talked insurance, we talked a little bit of everything, also some traffic management out on the highway and engaging the Sheriff's Department, which we will do. But essentially, the event is just geared towards having a nice event out in that beautiful space, having a kind of a trailer set up as a soundstage, playing some music, enjoying the surroundings. The public is invited, the community is invited, and just a nice time to relax and kind of enjoy life for a little bit. And so I've gone through some of the questions I've had with Janet. We're still working out some of the parking questions that exist. I think the packet is self-explained pretty much of how the event will take place and that she's getting some awesome grant money to do the event. So recommendation is for approval, and I don't know, Janet, if you have any additional comments.
It was just a thank you so much, Brett, for your assistance and support. Yes, this was simply designed, but pre-COVID, as an event during the summer season for our guests as well as for our community. So we modified it a little bit to follow the CDC guidelines, but it is, has received support from our Black Hills Badlands Tourism Association. So our board supported that, and we have invited a few of our wonderful providers here in Hill City to be a part of it. And also, we have gotten media support from KSLT, which is making a huge advertising package available to our members who participate, simply by, through their membership. So it's really an awesome opportunity, and we're grateful to be able to offer it to our community and to our guests who are here.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Council, any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion to approve Alderman Householder. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Gillespie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Phil Minor?
Yes.
Carl Doughty?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
All approve. All in favor, motion carries. Action Item 7J. 2021 Pre-Buy Propane Contract for Hill City. Stacia?
Okay. I put out a bid, or a request for bid for 25,000 gallons for our propane to, I think, three people. I sent it out to four, but I had two no responses, one for me. MG Oil Magas came in at $1.13, and Nelson Oil came in at $1.20. And I recommend us going with Magas. They've been our provider for the last couple of years, and they are great to work with. And so my recommendation is Magas.
Magas. Okay. Any discussion, Council?
Is this close to the amount you'd use annually?
Yes.
And do they give you the same price if we happen to go over?
I have not asked them that, but we actually have some from last year's contract that is still on there, about $5,000 worth of monies that are still sitting there to roll over if we go over on this year, too.
So this is a prepaid amount, Ken?
Yes, it is. Which we'll pay in August.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion to approve Alderman Gillespie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Minor. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doughty?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
Phil Minor?
Yes.
All in favor, motion approved. Action Item 7K. Approval of Mattkins Court Asphalt Street Repair. Brett, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So let me start with a little bit of history about Mattkins Court, and then we'll go into the price quotes. And I apologize for the late information. We had one price quote in the packet and had not yet received the other two, and we were able to knock on doors and whatnot and get the other two, but we weren't able to get that till late this afternoon. So there's a little bit of a learning curve here for everybody. Mattkins Court is located over right next to the Best Western Hotel off of Shoot Rooster Drive. It's that paved cul-de-sac of, oh, about eight different houses are back there, that little cul-de-sac's been developed probably for 30, 35 years now. Over the years, I know that there's been some issues with that street where there's been service lines and that have been worked on or replaced, and the bedding material hadn't been compacted great. And so the street actually kind of sunk in at a few locations. There is, at one point, kind of a grading issue with the drainage, and so it kind of has a pond right there, or at least it did, or does. And then about two years ago, two and a half years ago, it was around Thanksgiving time, we had a water main break at the bulb end of Mattkins Court. And so in order for the contractor to fix it, we had to tear up all the asphalt in that bulb of that cul-de-sac, remove all that asphalt, get down to the pipe, fix the pipe, and put it all back in with just gravel. And that's how it's been now for about the past two years. Okay? So fast forward to the past six months, we've been working on the Bull Run subdivision with bringing in paved streets for Top of Hill, Bun's Drive, and the extension of Quinn, and then also the extension of paved asphalt down Smoky Drive. So it's been a perfect opportunity for us to piggyback on an existing project in order to get some other repairs done that are in fairly close proximity. You know, one thing that is always challenging for Hill City is that we're kind of distanced from a lot of the major suppliers and vendors of services that reside in Rapid City. And that's a good thing in the respect of you can live in a wonderful community like this, but it's sometimes difficult to get companies to come up here to do, to work. And if you do, you're gonna pay a premium in mobilization costs. So what we did first was we engaged with SiteWorks, SiteWork specialists with Brandon, to talk about the ability to have him throw a price quote to the city for fixing Mattkins Court, and that is in your packet. He actually did a, he went and looked at it, and he did a base bid proposal, which is the bulb getting fixed and replaced, and then he did an alternate one at our request to replace the rest of the street as well. If you haven't driven on there lately, that repair part is definitely just gravel right now. The rest of the street is very alligatored and cracked and whatnot. And so it, in my opinion, the entire street needs to be redone appropriately. And so he put in a base price of $15,000 with an alternate one to be added in if you so choose. And that section next to Shoot Rooster Drive would just be milled, the top layer would be milled off, and then they would put like a top coat on it again, and then call it good. So that came in at just a little bit over $32,000. Okay? I know Travis has worked with J&amp;J Asphalt as far as getting them to come and look at the street as well. The bid is in front of you for that. As well as in that bid, there's also some other smaller locations that need some assistance here in town. One of them is over by Croll's Market, where we also had a water leak. And then I think, and here it's listed as Center Park, but I believe that's the Tracy Park, the 11-by-18 piece of street that we cut out and put the gravel in over by Tracy Park. And that was that subgrade failure from the spring with all of the frost heave that just worked its way out. So this price quote has a few other little elements in it, so there's about $5,000, a little over $5,000 worth of extra work that is essentially a different job. So their number is coming in about $44,500. And they are doing full-depth asphalt patching for the whole street. So it's removal of five-inch of existing, so base recompaction and final blue top grading with placement of five-inch asphalt mat. Okay? Whereas SiteWorks has done about half of it in that milling part of it. Okay? The last price quote that we have is from Simon, and this one is, came in at $74,820. And obviously, you know, the mobilization on this one is huge. It's $12,500 just for mobilization of them. Where SiteWorks is already here, J&amp;J's mobilization was $2,000. So here's the challenge with work like this. When we're doing street reconstruction of what we consider to be a decent street, meaning that we don't have a whole lot of issues going on other than it's wore out and it just needs to be replaced, we usually don't engage the city engineer for a whole street plan. If we did that and we had Kale come in and say, "Okay, we need to remove all of this, go down X number of inches, get our base course, the thickness of the asphalt," Kale could come up with a spec, a bid spec essentially, for us. And we would hand that out to these providers, and they would bid exactly the quantities and whatever that we had put in that bid spec for whatever Kale wanted, however he wanted to fix the road. In this case, we just approached the vendors directly and said, "Hey, we've already got a street. It's in lousy shape, but once it's all back together, it should be okay. We do have some curb and gutter that needs to be replaced as well," and that's reflected in some of the price quotes here. And so we went to them and said, "We need you to work on this and bring this up to speed for us." So we don't have a bid spec from the city engineer. Once we received all these price quotes this afternoon, and this is the part I don't like, because there's a lot of unknown conversations yet to be. I have not had a chance to communicate all of these numbers and have a chat with our Public Works Director yet, so that's one thing. I did have a chance to talk to Kale this afternoon about, once we had all of the price quotes in together. And his recommendation is, is that, you know, he's familiar with that Mattkins Court, and he's not comfortable with just doing a mill, a milling of that first section. He thinks it's probably damaged enough that we just need to rip it out completely and redo it. So essentially, what Kale is saying is that the work that's being proposed that we need done is probably closer to what J&amp;J Asphalt Company are providing, but that doesn't mean SiteWorks couldn't do it as well if they just modify their bid price to get rid of the milling and just do the full asphalt layer for the whole entire part of it. And so I think both of those companies are more than capable to do it. Again, SiteWorks is already gonna be there, and they're already working on things, so we figured it would be best to just piggyback off of that work and that it would fall in line with whatever schedule that occurred when Top of Hill was being done with the paving, which probably won't be until September. And I know depending on how the project goes, that might, you know, if they get some more delays, we can't go much into October with asphalt, but, you know, it's not gonna be tomorrow, it's not gonna be in August, but it would be in September. There was one last thing. So again, these bids don't, they're not apples to apples, and it's the way that we approached it of saying, "We need you to come in and just rehab the road for us." Kale agreed that we don't need necessarily a whole profile engineer's plan drawing to be done in order to do this work. He said, "That's just, you're just paying me money to do what these guys can do out in the field already." So he doesn't see the importance, and actually, when I talked to some of these contractors, they didn't feel that the job warranted that kind of work anyway, because the street already exists. So here's the last comment I'll make, and then we can open it up for discussion and see if you want to proceed, or if you've got some more questions or things that we can address. As a city, it's a lot different for us as a city to do business than it is for a private firm, because we do have spending limits within our own bounds mandated by the state. So the two price quotes that you see from J&amp;J Asphalt and SiteWorks both fall below what the state mandates is a $50,000 threshold. So if we think or know that the project is gonna be over $50,000, we have to go out to formal bids. Okay? We just have to. There's no way around it. Obviously, Simon's came in at $74,000. We won't be able to use their price quote just because of the sheer number of it. As much as anybody would like to use that one and know that Simon does a good job, we can't use it. If we ask for SiteWork specialists to adjust their number to get rid of the milling and just put the full asphalt in, that's fine. I think that's appropriate. We could probably do that. But again, if it exceeds, the overall cost exceeds $50,000, we can't. Likewise, J&amp;J Asphalt is already at $49,498.20. So that is the lay of the land. Again, I apologize for the late information. This is kind of what happens when you don't go out to formal bids, where you don't have a definitive deadline, and you're either, a deadline for numbers, you're either in or you're out. So any questions? I'm happy to try to answer them for you.
So Brett, funding for this, was it put into our 2020 budget, or what sources of funding would be available to complete this project?
So I believe that we do have money within our street fund. We have, so we have a few opportunities. There's the Street Improvement Fund that would have enough money to absorb up to $50,000. I can't remember what the exact number is in that fund. There's also contingency funds that are out there in the budget this year, and those are, we cut those back.
Yeah. It's, originally it was $88,000, but we cut it back to, I think, only 40, leaving 40 in there after we budgeted.
Right. And then I think there is some operational money in the budget, and I'd have to look at that real quick, just repairs within our repairs budget, but I'd have to double-check on that, because I don't remember. I know there's money there, I just don't know what the exact dollar amount is.
Thank you. Council? Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Minor?
I have a couple of questions. First off, I'm fine with giving the quotes. I don't think this is a project that Kale needs to go through a full bid process, so I think what Brett's done is just fine. My questions are, you mentioned this development is approximately 30, 35 years old, so do we know the condition of the utilities, water and sewer? I'd hate to repave this and then find out we need to replace that line, because it's got additional problems. I'd also... I'd also, he's already pointed out the problem, you know, one says they're going to fix thirty feet of gutter, the other says fifty feet, one says milling, one doesn't. I think the road is broken up bad enough that I, I don't want to do milling and just have a Band-Aid approach. If we're, if we're going to spend thirty or forty thousand dollars, let's fix it right. So I, I would agree with Brett that we need to see if Site Works can adjust their quote so we can compare apples with apples with J&amp;J's. And, and then I would ask that he and Travis and the city engineer review that, because he said he didn't have time to talk to Travis. And maybe we could table this till Thursday's meeting and that would give them a chance to update the numbers, talk, and then, then we could take action on Thursday. That would be my thoughts.
Okay. Brett, is that enough?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. I, I know that, I, I've already had kind of a similar conversation with the city engineer in, in making sure that Kale, or Brandon, sorry, that Brandon from Site Works understands kind of what our needs are to make sure that the, the, the street is done correctly. Because I know Kale was talking about putting some fabric underneath there just to stabilize it a little bit more and that's not included in here. So again, I think that's great that we can bring Travis into the loop and then communicate with Brandon and see where he's at. Because that's a, a great opportunity if, if the pricing is right, you know, since they're already right there to be doing the work.
Okay. Alderman?
And we can also, we can also look at the, the question about the sewer mains and the water mains.
Okay. Good. Alderman Householder, you had something you wanted to say?
I'm totally in agreement with tabling this till we get some more information. And I'd like to see, Site Works also bid the other two patches that need to be done. Put that in their bids and we are comparing better to apples to apples. And then Site Works has these exclusions. Are there any of those that we're going to, are we going to incur some cost on?
We don't, we don't need surveying because we already know the parameters of where the street is. So that won't need to be done. Winter conditions, it won't be done in the winter. Staging area, they've already got, they've already, they've already established a staging area because they're already here. We're not going to be affecting seeding, mulching, fertilizer and landscaping. We're not going to be disrupting anybody's front yards and whatnot. And then I, I will have to ask about that last one, the SW PPP monitoring and paperwork. That one is the only one I don't know about.
Yes, I would be much in favor of tabling.
Any other discussions, comments?
I don't need to review what's been said.
Okay.
So Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Minor, you have the floor.
SWIP, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, and you generally need it when you disturb an acre or more of soil. So this project shouldn't require a SWIP.
Okay.
And then they had testing, traffic control, some other things in there. Are, are they thinking that they're going to test the asphalt mix for us?
I think that was in the Site Works one.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're all in agreement to table till Thursday.
Okay. If no further conversation, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to table.
Motion to table, Alderman Householder, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I'll second.
Alderman Gillespie seconded. Table till Thursday. Any other discussion? Stacia?
Bill Householder?
Yes.
Bill Minor?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, motion carries. That will be the end of our action items. We'll move into discussion items. We've already heard from the Pennington County Sheriff's Department. So I'll invite Janet to provide us a chamber update.
With my thanks once again. That is an honor that really truly belongs to our chamber board and everyone here. But I thank you so much for the recognition. You know, they say sometimes that things come in, good things come in threes. I'm changing the, the usual moniker on that one. But Hill City has been very fortunate. Relationships are very important, as we all know. And Hill City's been very fortunate to be, having been recognized by South Dakota Tourism and our Governor's Office. The first surprise came when we were invited to attend and represent Hill City for the Mount Rushmore fireworks. That was the first one. The second one that I have to share with everyone here that's so important is that the Governor's Office made a referral to our offices to refer a couple who was looking to retire. We were one of three. I don't know who the other two communities were, but I think that's so important because again, it, it just shows the value of relationships that we have. So I'm so honored that we were able to be, to support the Governor's Office and South Dakota Tourism. And then again, I share this with all of you and with, with our, with our board. Really, this last month can best be summarized by serving. And that's what we do. We serve our community, we serve our members, we serve our visitors. So really that's what this past month has been all about. I've got to tell you one thing that was a big surprise to us and we're going to continue it on. Because of COVID, we have made our literature available outside for our guests. I couldn't believe it. When I walked in yesterday at the visitor's center, all the packets that we had put out from the day before on Saturday were gone. So that just means we have super high traffic at the visitor's center. We just don't know exactly how many. We are keeping count of what we see inside, but there are a lot of people who come out afterwards, after hours, and we see a lot of people enjoying the visitor information grounds. So that is super exciting. We continue to answer lots of questions for our visitors by phone and in person, things that they're looking for, our help with lodging, cabins, ATV trail information, hiking trail information. So that's kind of the, the gist of it. The exciting thing now going forward is we've had a great response to our launching of our membership campaign. And I'm, I'm going to be super excited to report to you next month on the numbers. We've had, I think, within ten days, we had at least twenty-four percent of our members renewing, which was just super awesome. And they continue to come in. Some come in person and some mail that checks in. Again, our website traffic for the month, people still want to know, where can they stay? That's the overwhelming request that we get now. By phone, where can they stay? Stay at cabins? They look for sites and attractions. They want to know what's to do. Again, they want to know where to stay. They want to find out the latest information about travel and safety and health issues here. They want to know where they can eat and drink, stay at campgrounds, and they want to know about our events. So I also want to thank, unrecognize, and, and, and say thank you. I'm backtracking a bit, but I did want to say thank you to our outgoing Aldermen for their dedication to service and welcome to our incoming Aldermen. Because again, relationships matter and we're proud to, to work with all of you. We appreciate our relationship and our partnership with the city. Also to Mayor Kathy for her support, always at our dedications and ribbon cuttings as she was this past Saturday. To Brett for his help with our concert coming up and also to Stacia and everyone involved here at the city. Targeted emails coming up. We are excited because we want, we're already looking for messaging going into 2021. How we're going to reach our members, how we're going to reach our, promote our members and reach our visitors. So this is exciting. We've got, we're going to, we're going to launch quarterly targeted emails. So that is something that we wanted to do this year and I'm hoping that we can do that yet with the late summer, going into fall, going into our winter season. And I think that pretty much hits the high point. Technically, if we look at the numbers, we're about fifty percent in terms of our traffic for where we were a year ago. So, and we can blame, we, we know who to blame for that one. But we are finding that people are wanting to be out and about. The traffic is amazing with our RVs, the vehicle traffic. So I, and we couldn't do this without our awesome staff like Sue and our board. So that's kind of the, the overview, the highlight. Rally's coming up. We are looking at our events coming up for the fall and winter. Annual dinner. We've got great media coverage from KEBN and KOTA. Proud to support our members and promoting them and appreciate their help like Turtle Town and the Eighteen Eighty Train. And we are already looking at our messages and themes for 2021. And South Dakota Tourism is going to be a big part of that with our, with our matching grant. So that's what I can share with you for right now with my thanks.
Thank you. Janet, any questions? Comments?
Thanks for your hard work, Janet.
And yours. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Janet.
Very much. Thank you again.
All right. Okay. Moving on to Action Item 8C, Public Works Director's Report. And I believe we have Travis on the phone.
I am here. Apology for not being there tonight. I'm guessing everybody's got a copy of my report for the month. I guess I'll just open it up if there's any questions on it at all. The only thing to add to it is I do have a May water pump versus water field difference, which you guys probably don't.
I added.
If anybody wants to know that.
I added it into their copy that they got.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
So yeah.
I appreciate this kind of report, Travis. It really brings us up to date.
Yeah, I'm working on keeping good notes and bringing as much detail as I can. I know there was some questions on some stuff that, or some not city operations that went on, but I figured it's a little transparency there if anybody's seen what went on and had questions, so.
All right. Thanks, Travis. Nice report.
You're welcome. Sorry I couldn't be there.
Next time. Okay. Let's then go ahead and.
Absolutely.
Let's go ahead and move on to Action Item 8D, Updates on Full Run Subdivision. So I'm not sure who wants to go ahead and take this one on.
If anybody's got any questions for me.
Yep.
I've been in contact with Shane almost every day up there, so.
Okay.
I put some notes in my report on it, but if there's any questions, feel free to ask.
Okay.
Update on Bull Run. It's progressing. Best thing I can say at this point, it's maybe not as fast as we'd like, but it's progressing. We've got three homes sold.
Three homes sold, three spec homes are going. They're going to, after they get their building permit, they're going to start houses as soon as the curb and gutter. And I was in a meeting with Jim Skoll last Friday. Their, their goal is to start curb and gutter on the twentieth or before. So there's lots of activity, lots of different people looking. There's lots of realtors coming up to the other realtors and so it's, it's. But I think once we get the first houses started, I think you're going to have a fire out there, so.
Yeah, it's been really well. Also Jim Skoll was so excited about our project that he bought some additional property. I don't know if it was public. Well. That's good.
And if you searched on, I think I was on Trulia a week or so ago, they don't have the full range of pictures of it yet, but you can, you can search for listings.
Okay. And Brett, anything that you or Travis would like to add relative to city involvement in what's currently going on in Bull Run?
So there's a, I'm going to read this. This is a little blurb that's in your packet. Plus there's an actual timeline in your packet as well of, of what things are coming up and the projected time into which they're going to take place. So the, the blurb in your packet, it's all the utilities been installed for Quinn Drive. The base course is in place and ready for curb and gutter. They're planning on placing curb this coming week for Quinn Drive. They finished testing of the mains on Quinn Drive the week of July sixth. Started to put the sewer pipe in on Top of Hill and got to manhole number nine before they cleaned up for the long holiday weekend. I know that they, we've been observing kind of the struggles that they've had over off of Top of Hill Court with all the rock. I don't know if you've been over there, but there's a lot of rock that they've run into with the sewer line installation. And so they've got that hammer attachment on that track hoe that's pounding away, trying to make some progress. So I know that's really quite slowed down the pace, so to speak. And so overall, Site Works is running a couple of weeks behind where they'd like to be. I know that the, and Travis can speak to this better than I, that they've, they've pressure tested the lines. And I know that they were working on one manhole and I believe that they got that one figured out. And then they were testing the water lines and I believe those all checked out what's been installed so far so that they know that they're, they're, can hold pressure on them. So I don't know, Travis, if you had any other.
Brett, everything's been tested and passed so far and I have pictures to confirm all the testing if anybody needs to see it.
Okay. Thank you, Travis. And so again, I'll just refer to this timeline in your packet of kind of the projected completion and what's coming up so you know what to expect. Yeah, we can probably get you a better copy.
Your electronic version, you can make bigger on your computer.
Right, it's easier if we email it out.
Yeah. So make sure you get that up, you can see it.
We're, we're, from the city's perspective, we're real happy with the dialogue and the communication from them and the quality of work and whatnot. So I think it's going well.
Any, any questions? Any discussion?
Mayor?
Alderman Minor? You have the floor.
Yes, I asked for this to be placed on the agenda, so I want to thank Danny for putting together that update and, and Brett and Travis for, for their help. Being such an important community project, I, I just wanted to see the latest information on it. I was hoping that maybe you could recommend it be maybe a monthly thing on Brett's report out to keep us informed.
Absolutely. We can add that to Brett's report out since the sidewalk has come off. He's missing a topic, so we can, we can put this one on. And I personally first would like to thank Alderman Minor for the recommendation to have this on the agenda. We do have new council members and it is an extremely important project for the city. I also want to thank Danny. Her recognition tonight reflects all of the work that she's done on this project. And I'd just like to make it clear that what's happening and the way this is happening is going to be the standard that we expect to follow as a city. We do not want to have ourselves in situations going forward where we have areas and subdivisions that go in with, with repairs needed immediately and with substandard work. I commend the staff, the council, everyone that, the EDC, everyone that worked on this project. It was a true community project and it's really bringing back what Hill City is. We're that friendly town. We're trying to provide affordable housing to help folks experience the same wonderful things we do by living in this community. So congratulations to the city as a whole. I think this is going in the right direction. We will continue to keep our finger on it and I want to thank everybody for their interest in it. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move on then into report items, common council. I did receive a text from Alderman Doty. He was on the road and he said he thought he might lose connection and sure enough, he has. His, his phone has come off. So we will not be able to get a report out from him, although I doubt that there's much to report out since he just took his oath tonight, as with a couple of you. So let's go ahead and, and see if Alderman Minor has something that he'd like to share with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have several items. Number one, I wanted to thank Finance Officer Town. She shared a link from the South Dakota Municipal League about budgeting. It was a webinar. And so I went through that. And it had two items on it which I wanted to share if the other Aldermen haven't had the chance yet to, to go to that link and, and review that. Rob Forten from the South Dakota Department of Revenue, in his presentation, recommended that governing bodies should be reviewing monthly financials. And so I think we've somewhat started that in the reports that are being done, especially on the revenue side. And we're, obviously we see all the bills to be paid. And I've asked about any particular. And I've asked about any particular line items in the budget that are close to being over. And so I know that's being watched. And that goes with a second point from Mr. Fortin. Department heads should be monitoring their budgets and report to the governing body. And it says before, and before was in capital letters, bold and underlined, before exceeding their budgets. And so I think in light of the budget freezes that we've been instituting, that it's more port, more important than ever that our various department heads keep reviewing their budgets. And that if they are going to go over, they need to be contacting the finance officer and ultimately council so that we can take action. I'd also, I'd also like to talk about the new trash cans on Main Street. Maybe that will be in a report out item later. But one thing I'd ask staff to consider, what's the number one item of litter on Main Street? Does anybody know?
Cigarette butts.
Yeah, exactly. I've literally picked up, swept up and shoveled up thousands of them. And so if we're going to put new trash cans out, how about some smoking receptacles, especially in front of restaurants? And the drinking establishments? Because that's where we tend to see a, a large amount of, of, of the cigarette butts. It makes the whole downtown look like an ashtray and it's really disgusting.
That, that topic has been, that topic has been broached in our, in our committee. So we, we agree.
Great. The next item I'd like to talk about is our budget freezes. Most of you probably aren't aware, I know that Mayor and Finance Officer are, that for the past, what, four months now? I've been talking with representatives of the lodging, restaurant, merchandise, retail sales and attractions. Those businesses, representatives of those businesses in Hill City, gauging how their sales are going, how things are, are looking from their perspective. And I did verify, because I was asked the question, the businesses that I'm talking to regularly employ over 220 people in Hill City. And so they all have urged that the council adopt a very conservative budget. And looking into 2021, the same thing. As you know, or probably don't know, the state released our May sales tax and triple B revenues. They were down 17.48% from last year. Last year, if you remember May, we had three large snowstorms and flooding. And so it wasn't a very good month. May, so to be down an additional 17 and a half percent should really give us pause. I know we're starting budget carrying Thursday. So I would urge the other aldermen to start talking to our local businesses and read some of the revenue reports that Finance Officers has been putting out. Because I think it's really going to be a tough 2021 budget. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And now we'll go ahead and go to Alderman Gillespie. I know you've been here a whole half hour.
Actually have just one thing. At one point, we were, the city or the council was talking about a code of conduct for the council. And I have what we worked on in the past and I've shared a copy with Kathy, Dale. Brett has seen it. And I will email that to you, Bill and Carl. I'll make sure I got your city emails right and I'll send you the word document of it. But it is my thought that the council, well, it's not going to hurt anything to have a code of conduct for us. There are other cities that have it and there are some that don't. But it's something that I think is probably worth pursuing. Get your guys' input and see where it goes.
Thank you. And Alderman Householder.
The only thing I guess is I'd like to thank the voters of Ward Two for their confidence in myself. And I will look forward to serving them and the entire city of Hill City and its Go Team Hill City, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Okay, I will, I will be quick of it. First, I will start as I'll, I'll take Alderman Gillespie's Code of Conduct as a little bit of segue into what I'd like to say. So the first thing you had mentioned is city emails. So from a communication perspective, with any individuals that are outside or any of us internally, I'd request that we please use city email as the way to do that. It's nice to have a personal email and we can have the emails directed to your personal email. So you're aware of when it comes in. However, for city business, you are provided with that email address. And I believe we have consensus that we should all be using it, so I'd like that in the future. The next thing that I would like to stress is that I am very excited about the new energy that we're going to have as a council. One of the things that I had asked of, of prior organizational structures here that was maybe not so much followed is that we treat each other with respect. At the end of the day, this is all about people. People are what makes this work and there's no reason why someone should not feel comfortable coming to a council meeting because of the way they're talked to. I do not expect to see myself, nor any other representative of the city in whatever capacity it is, representing our city in a derogatory fashion, not supporting our city, being racist and bullying. I think that the citizens have felt that for a while. I know personally I have as well. And I don't want to speak for them, but I believe I can at this point, that the staff has been put in that situation as well. And there's just no excuse for that. We need to treat each other with respect. We're adults. We got here because we were able to experience life and we are adults. And we need to make sure that we conduct ourselves in that manner, not resort to childish behavior. So again, I'm very excited. I thank everyone that wants to be on council. It's exciting to see people that are stepping up and truly trying to make our city the place that we know that it can be. Speaking of the place that we know that it can be, I don't know if any of you have witnessed it, but even last night, as we were coming home from dinner at 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, I saw cars parked all the way over by the doctor's office. And I just anticipate that with Sturgis coming, while I understand that it'll be mostly motorcycle traffic, we're going to have additional parking issues, there's a lot of people coming into our area. While the numbers early have not reflected it, I have had different conversations with businesses who are telling me. One today, as a matter of fact, who approached me and said, we are doing, we've had the best season so far that we've had since we opened our shop doors 20 years ago. So I know that there's a lot of people that are coming in. We had some comments a little bit earlier on the tennis court. I just wanted to update the council relative to the intentions. Yes, the fence was taken down. The intention of that is to be able to utilize that space now to provide additional parking area. Brett is going to be working with Public Works to line that area off and potentially get some sales that might provide some shading for cars there. We'll take a look at signage and how we can get vehicles in there. But we want to make that open to parking as well. So people understand that they can park in that tennis court area. It's, it's additional spaces that we can provide for them. So we're, we're in the process of trying to pull all that together, get all that stuff done. I know that during rally time, it might be more, might be a better use to have motorcycles parked there as it would be a space for them, for those who don't need to see their bikes parked on Main Street. Or quite honestly, if Main Street gets too busy right now, I don't know what's going to happen. So that is the intention and that is what we're moving forward with. And it is parked property. It is city property. So if someone wants to use it, we've always been, we've always dealt that with that as a first come, first served request. So if that area needs to be utilized, people can ask us and we can handle it accordingly. The last thing is the street assessment. So we talked a little bit about Matkins Court. There's other streets in the area. And prior to the new council coming onboard, we were discussing having a street assessment done that you will be provided the results of. And the goal is to give you that quantitative data and information so it can help us build what a five and 10-year road plan would be. So we'd like to engage the council in that. I saw the first draft of the plan. There's some additional things that are going to be added to it to make it easier to read, easier for us to understand, and then we can go from there. As a matter of fact, earlier this week, I received a call from one of our residents on, is it Betty Matkins Drive? We call it unnamed road. But it is one of three roads that are not maintained by the city. They're not owned by the city. So part of our discussion should include why? What needs to be done in order to make this happen? And how do we move forward? So hopefully, we will have that in one of the next upcoming meetings and we'll, we'll be able to discuss that. And so Stacia doesn't have to use her stick again. I'm going to go ahead then and turn it over to Stacia.
I only have two quick things to go over. The 2020 election workshop is Wednesday, September 2nd. If you guys would like to attend, I already have Dale written down. But if anyone else wants to attend, just email me and I will get you registered. The second thing is, is DNR sent us that we have, we are certified and congratulated us on our achievement award for our 2019 drinking water compliance. So.
Excellent. And Brett, do you have quick updates for us?
Very, very quick updates. One thing that we've kind of glossed over a little bit earlier was the budget. We do have budget meetings coming up, but Stacia and I and Travis, we've been talking budget internally now for like at least the past two weeks, if not more. And we're working with the library and Public Works to figure out how that budget looks. When you, when you get that budget, you have to realize we still have to have the, the lights on. We still have to, you know, buy towels and cleaning supplies and whatnot. I mean, there's just, there's kind of the, the boring mundane stuff that we need to, to still purchase that we really can't cut back on. But there are the bigger ticket items and projects that, for purchases and vehicle replacement, all of that kind of stuff that we really need to dial in on and, and figure out where we're going to go with those. So we're trying to map those out. So that's just a quick comment on the budget. The trash can, Bill already talked about the trash can. In case people aren't aware, we have a trash can committee that is also covering the ashtray, smoke, whatever stop things. Plus, we're also talking about benches for Main Street. And so we're, we're kind of bundling it all together and really gets a good direction. The focus has been a kind of on the trash can part of it. And so we've, we bought two sample trash cans. One's a black one, one's a green one. We put them down by Granite Sports is one. The other one's down by Just Dandy. And so if you're interested in seeing what we're looking at, they're on Main Street right now. You can go down and throw your trash in to see how it makes you feel and, and take it for a test drive. And so if, if you do so happen to go and look at it, just send us an email or a quick phone call to City Hall and say, hey, I like the green one. Hey, I like the, the black one. Because there is no difference between the two other than color. We think we found something that's durable, doesn't need to get painted, can not have a whole bunch of rain and, and whatnot. We can weigh it down so that it doesn't blow away. We kind of checked a lot of boxes on it. So we're going to do the same with the opportunities for benches and with the cigarette butt problem. And so we'll continue that group with that. And then we'll look at, once we're ready to actually move forward on that and council will free up the, the funds to purchase those things. You know, the trash cans we're looking at are actually pretty cheap. So I thank Dale for finding those specific ones. Because we looked at a lot of different websites and he found one that, that checks a lot of the boxes. Let's see. Water reservoir project. I just had a conversation with Kale. He's actually submitted the site plan in. He's got some, he's working with Great Plains Tank. They're the people who installed our tanks and does the repair work. He has some fabrication and installation questions for them related to the location, just to make sure that we're kind of finding some cost efficiencies with the installation of this new reservoir on the east side of town. So that's where we're at on that. So he's doing some engineering investigation. The Major Lake Drive Bridge Project. For those of you who don't know, that, that bridge needs to be replaced and we've got a sewer line that runs underneath it. All of the plans for that are done. And so all of that is ready to go. What we had to do was get special permission from the Forest Service in order to reroute our sewer line a little bit. And so we had to go through the archaeological review and I have that report. It's like a 40-some page report. Happy to share that with anybody who'd like to see it. The recommendation out of the report was that there was no significant finding of any impact. What I forgot, and this is the government world again, why things take so long. Now that that report is out there, they have to send it out to all the other government entities. And I think there's about 13 to 15 of them that they mail that report out. And then there's a 30 or 45-day comment period that they have to, that they are entitled to read through it and then get back to us by a date. And I think we're about halfway into that waiting period. So we're waiting for them to come back and see if they have any concerns about the project moving forward. Once we get the green light from all of these entities saying that they're, they agree with the no significant finding, then we can move to the next step of the bid lighting process. That's all.
One last thing before I adjourn. I have up here samples of hand sanitizer wipe packets and not necessarily this mask. But what we're planning on doing as a city to address some of the concerns relative to COVID and as Sturgis comes and we continue to anticipate additional traffic in our area, is we were able to find individual packets of hand sanitizer wipes. We're going to be putting care packages together for each of those city businesses and provide these to the businesses as a way that they can then pass them out to people instead of putting them somewhere and folks taking handfuls. We talked about dispensers and things like that and the simple logistics and ability to be able to get those things is so slim. I was surprised we were able to get these as, as fast as we did. We ordered 20,000 of these. So we'll be putting together those packets and passing them out to businesses. I have the masks and we've still got some on order. So that is one of the ways that the city is planning on addressing some of the additional traffic that we're going to see. So we've got samples up here if anybody wants to see them. I understand they don't smell the best, but they sanitize. So they hopefully do their job. And with that being said, I'm going to-